Seeing it's a little past 10 o'clock, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all their special assessment and taxing districts for which said boards so it acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So if we can raise for the place supervisor Finnegan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any introduction of new employees? Okay, seeing no introductions. Any actions taken from closed session?
Yes, just one. On the John Miller case, there was a unanimous vote to have council continue to work forward to a possible settlement on that case.
Okay. Okay, at this point, officer, are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from the board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and matters requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Okay, seeing no changes. At this time, we'll now hear brief reports and announcements from board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. Start with Supervisor McNamara.
Okay, I had a pretty quiet couple of weeks, except for one big event that ended up a big disappointment. I also had Del Norte Solid Waste Meeting last week, or before, since the last meeting. I had a chamber board meeting, and the city gave a presentation on Front Street and the possibility of changing the name to Tsunami Way. And I still am having real mixed feelings about it. I'm not sure if I really want that changed, just because I've lived here all my life, and it's always been Front Street. And I used to say, when people would bring up the tsunami and everything, is that still our claim to fame? Is this tsunami? But with the economy the way it is, and us promoting tourism, I guess maybe we should jump on something that is, you know, they really talked about developing around the tsunami and putting more informational things down in Front Street. So we'll see. Like I said, I still have mixed feelings about it. I also attended the Chamber Mixer at the Verizon Store on Second and 101, and they had a nice barbecue. It was a pretty good turnout for being windy and not a real nice afternoon. Then I attended the farmer's market and spent a lot of time with a couple of great-grandchildren. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor McNamara. Supervisor Hammison?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I also had, of course, most of us had the Solid Waste Authority meeting. Went to a Farm Bureau dinner where we had a speaker from Siskiyou County who was going over their water woes, which eventually will affect all counties. They're in the middle of litigation. It has to do with stream bed restoration, and I forget what the permit numbers are, but anyway, we're just removing the water now. They're wanting them to get these permits. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, so just evidently just removing the water from the stream bed, or the irrigation ditch, or whatever it is, it becomes a whole different process now. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority workshop, still going over some terminal modifications. Attended Memorial Day Services at the cemetery. Filled in for Supervisor Finnegan at Tri Agency. Was invited to Klamath for a discussion over the Red Mountain Communications Tower issue, which I guess we shouldn't have called it Red Mountain, because the Uroch tribe has taken Red Mountain out of the equation. They're saying that's not going to happen. We will not be able to use Red Mountain as that communication site. And they're proposing a different, or I guess they're not proposing a different alternative, but they're saying that we need to come up with a different alternative. The alternatives that have been come up with are to use three different peaks that will make it very difficult to service the Klamath River. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Had a local mental health board meeting and attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting. That was it for me.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, thank you. I've had a fairly busy two weeks, and I'm happy with the outcome of being reelected and would like to thank the community for their support and thank my constituents for their vote. I'm excited about the future, and I think that we can just keep moving forward, so I'm ecstatic. I too attended the Memorial Day Services and Solid Waste, and I've also been in contact with the governor's office in relationship to their openings on boards that we in this part of the world could have impact on. And one is the Water Board. The Regional Water Board still has openings, and so does the Ocean Protection Council, and possibly even Fish and Games. So we need to be thinking about that as community members of how can we get our voice out there? So I'm just kind of tossing that out to let people know that that discussion is happening. And I, again, just want to say thank you to the community for their support.
All right. Supervisor Finnegan?
Yeah, I had a few meetings since the last time you saw me, but I'm not going to tell you about them all, because we'd be here too long. Had a meeting with the RDA regarding the RDA dissolving it and seeing what bills need to be paid and whatnot, and getting it certified by the auditor. And that's an ongoing process. Had a CSAC, the State Association Conference Call regarding future conferences. Went to Sunset High School. They had a presentation where they wanted to improve their meals, so they had a roundtable there. Kids there did a great job and engaged the administration of the school district, and very successful in having a little healthier approach to the meals that they have out there. Went to New Mexico for the Western Interstate Region of the National Association of Counties. A lot of the issues, we've talked before, in the Western Region, California, is on the cutting edge of it, whether it's the National Forest County Schools Coalition, or land use, or memorandums understanding with the different federal agencies. Also had a Airport Authority when I came back, the charrette regarding the terminal building, and we're getting closer. I think we're down to looking at materials and colors. The floor plan seems to be doing very well. Went back to Sacramento for the State Association of Counties Legislation Conference. Was well-attended, had some good speakers. Senator Steinberg, Senator Huff, the leading Democrat and the leading Republican, both gave their take within 15 minutes of each other of the state of the budget and where we're going in California, and how we're going to absorb the debt, how to deal with it. And then Diane Cummings from the Department of Finance got up and tried to say that they're both right, which was really a chore. Then we also had a luncheon meeting. The governor was supposed to show up. However, the meeting was at the Hyatt, and because they are non-union, the governor chose not to show up. But he did show up later on in the afternoon. Lenny Eliasen, the president of the National Association of Counties, spoke. He talked about some of the same issues that we're dealing with here with the first five, whether it's healthy gardens and healthy foods and things like that. And also had Bob Myers, I think was his name, reporter from TV, as well as written journalists, his take on what's going on with the budget and the initiatives. Had a CSAC board meeting with the Board of Directors the following day, where the governor did show up, spent probably about 45 minutes with us, talking, answering questions, trying to engage the counties, let them know that we are a partner, we are part of the solution, and talked about AB 109, which is the Department of Corrections bringing local solutions to some of the recidivism issues. To that end, I had a meeting with finance and with the Department of Corrections, with their upper-tier people regarding our sheriff's budget and how to try to recoup some of the costs because of a drug diversion program the state no longer makes available to us that had been figured into its budget. We also had a little cocktail party. You didn't have to have a cocktail, but everybody did, with the governor, and had excellent access to a lot of the legislature chose to show up, because it was off-site from the Hilton, as well as the governor. First thing he did when he sees me is says, "Del Norte, you guys' Cal Works is 24 percent. State average is 11. Why is that?" I mean, this is the kind of governor that just plucks stuff out of the air, and so you get to engage him one-on-one regarding some of those issues that may lead to some relief somewhere down the road. But it's nice to know that he knows that poverty is a real issue, and that he does know where we're from. Then I came back and was a judge in a rethink-your-drink. Maybe somebody saw it in the newspaper, trying to get people to switch to water rather than soda, that it is long-term diabetes results, obesity results with the sugar, and there's really some great alternatives. In fact, if you go, if you ever travel, whether it's the Hyatt, the Hilton, the Marriott, wherever, no matter what city, Washington, Sacramento, there are those hydrating buckets, stations, whatever, in the lobbies, and they'll change it. One day, they'll throw watermelon in there, or they'll throw limes and lemons in there, or mints, and so corporate America knows the importance of going to water rather than putting out a free soda machine, so maybe we can do that local and make it fun. Obviously, there was an election that took place. I want to thank all the constituents and the supporters for re-electing me again. Look forward to continuing to be the voice of people that have a hard time speaking up, and plotting forward, as Martha said, I think is a good way to put it. Then I also attended a Chamber Mixer Gamers Retreat, nicely attended, quite an operation they have going there. And that was just some of the stuff that we did, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, had a, attended a Local Transportation Commission meeting with Supervisor Hammison. Attended Solid Waste Meeting, as well as everyone else on the board here. Attended a Tri Agency Meeting, where we actually have something on the agenda in regards to the sell, the ethanol product that could be potentially produced off the forest lands. We'll see, there is some hope that that will go through. Did agenda review. Attended the North Deal Meeting with the Executive Director, Tamara Layton, of the Local Transportation Commission Meeting, and we did teleconference, and there's all kinds of projects. So good news is, is they are pushing forward with Willes Bypass, which has been a major project for, you know, at least a decade, and at this point, they're going forward with that, as well as Richardson Grove continues to push ahead, so we're hopeful both projects will get done. Locally, they are now, which we've been pushing them to do anyway, but Last Chance Grade has been, if you've been up there, you've seen they're working on Last Chance Grade now, and again, because that's an ongoing, you know, the pavement, you always go through the pavement, it's probably because it's an active slide, so no matter how much pavement, and I've heard all kinds of numbers, but there's several feet of pavement underneath that Last Chance Grade. So Caltrans is now adding up what they're actually having to spend on this thing every year, which we've been encouraging them to do anyway, because I'll, you know, in a lot of respects, I know they had issue with Confusion Hill forever, that they kept pouring money, pouring money, and they finally said it's just cheaper to rebuild, to reroute it, and I think they're going to run into the same issue with Last Chance Grade, because at some point, they're going to have to reroute the road, and they'll have to put it more inland. So I think it's important that they do add that up, but they've got a $4 million project that's going to extend the retaining wall that they've put up there already, so I think it's just a Band-Aid situation. An expensive Band-Aid, but a Band-Aid nonetheless. The other issue, you'll notice when you go down Hamilton Hill through there, that they've roughened the pavement, as well as rumble strips, and it's all stuff to try and basically, it's a huge safety hazard. So that's what Caltrans is doing right now, to make sure that it's going to make it a safer route. Of course, if you realigned the highway there, you wouldn't have that issue, but two birds with one stone. Attended the Farm Bureau Dinner with Supervisor Hammison and our CAO, and the head gentleman from Siskiyou County, as Supervisor Hammison mentioned. Siskiyou County is right in the saddle. It's a constant battle with the federal government in terms of issues, and property right issues that seem to constantly, they seem to have a lot of some of the issues we run into. And so let's see. And then, at this point, I, that's it. So we'll go to a brief report from County Administrative Officer.
Well, over the last few weeks, our office has been involved in a number of conference calls, primarily along with impacts or effects of the proposed state budget, AB 109, and most recently, the IHSS issue. In that sense, the state is coming forward with a proposal to take that collective bargaining back to the state level, which they gave to the counties of about 1990. Currently, we negotiate with the IHSS workers, but we really don't have any type of personnel involvement with it. And the big question in that for all the counties was maintenance of effort, and for those that don't speak government, that is, the amount that the counties would be asked to pay back to the state for them taking back the program that they gave to us 20 years ago. So that ongoing negotiations or discussion will be happening, and we kind of expect something to happen pretty quickly. Been working on plans submitted by different departments regarding any significant deficits in the recommended 12, 13 budgets, and trying to come up with solutions that will be presented to the board. Likely, some of the more significant ones won't happen until we know exactly what's happening with the state budget, as well as our year-end, which would be around August. We interviewed prospective insurance brokers and awaiting final info and data from the top two. Had a meeting yesterday with the city manager regarding city-county shared services and talking about a timing of the next joint meeting. The agreement between the city and county expires, I believe, September 1, so we'll be looking at trying to have a shared meeting maybe in August. We'll talk to the board and the city council, see what we can do. We are in the process of continuing the negotiations for the public defender contract, and we hope to meet with them this week. And we've recently reviewed the most recent proposals for the Point St. George Environmental Compliance for the Coastal Trail, and we'll be setting up interviews for the top two and only two that actually bid on that project. They came in below what was estimated, so that's always nice to see. It's all about timing now. And we've recently joined E-Civis, which is a company that provides a grant database so that we can look at and actually query for different types of grants, see what might be available for us to maximize our county money, and try to come up with something to offset some of our costs associated with everything from capital projects to agriculture, public safety. This gives us a database that's quite a lot more extensive than just receiving emails as we typically do from state or federal departments, or from our associations. And at this point, we will be continuing our budget process and presenting a budget to the board, a recommended budget, at the next meeting, and go over some of the issues that we have that will need to await some final information and data.
Okay, thanks. It's, I know it's not going to get pretty, it's going to get even uglier. I do need to jump back, though, on my report, that I did have a pretty cool meeting with the, it's a women's group out in Smith River that came into town at my office, and they really, it's been, California and Del Norte Wild Rivers has been involved with getting them organized, and you've got from, you know, English speakers to, you know, primary, you know, English as a second language. It's a pretty cohesive group, and they wanted to touch on recreational opportunities on what can be done out in Smith River, and as well as animal control issues with dogs that are, still got an issue out there with dogs in Smith River, and then also transportation. So it was good to see them come to me, and it's usually the other way around, me going to them, so it was, that has a pretty big impact when a group comes and, you know, and has a, it was a good conversation. It wasn't, they were just searching out information, and they had ideas, they wanted, so I was thankful that Geneva Wiki was involved with them on that, so. The other thing is, it definitely would be huge of me to congratulate our two supervisors that won the election. I know it's, and I've been in close to runoff before, and it's not fun, so I wish you good luck on that race, and, but going through the process, it is, it's a tough process, so congratulations and good luck. So at this point, we will go ahead and I will entertain a motion for to adopt the consent agenda.
The move is...
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on any item on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. Chairman, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hammison?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, minus number seven. I have a conflict of interest on that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a couple proclamations in there, so let's go, or we have a resolution. We'll go ahead and start with number two, Resolution of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors commemorating the 75th anniversary of the Golden Gate Bridge. Supervisor McClure's got the resolution.
Yes, this is Resolution 2012-12, Resolution of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors commemorating the 75th anniversary of the Golden Gate Bridge. Whereas the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District has observed the 75th anniversary of the opening of the Golden Gate Bridge on May 27, 1937, and whereas it was determined that bridging the Golden Gate Strait was feasible, and Assemblyman Frank Combs of Napa took the initiative and introduced the Golden Gate Bridge and Highway District Act, adopted by the California Legislature on May 25, 1923. And whereas the district was formally incorporated December 4, 1928, and included San Francisco, Marin, Sonoma, and Del Norte, with most of Napa and part of Mendocino Counties. Whereas the construction began on January 5, 1933, and at noon on May 28, 1937, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt pressed the telegraph key in the White House to open the Golden Gate Bridge to automobile traffic. And whereas the County of Del Norte played a historic role in the opening of the north coast of California to motorize traffic with an amazing scenic route linking the Bay Area with the Oregon border, better known as the Redwood Empire. And whereas upon opening the Golden Gate Bridge was an instant success and became a vital link to the livelihood, recreation, commerce, and communication between San Francisco and all the northern counties. And whereas Del Norte County has been very fortunate to have directors on the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District representing our interests, who have been consistently dedicated, hardworking, and generous of their time, beginning first with Harry Westbrook II, December 11, 1928, to December 11, 1932, and December 19, 1936, was Milton McVeigh, December 19, 1932, and Herbert Feely, December 19, 1940, to December 11, 1964, Ed Freger, December 12, and Bernard McLendon, January 1986 to 1987, John Frazer, February 1987 to 2003, James Hooper, September 9, 2003, to December 11, 2003, and Gerald Cochran, January 27, 2004, to the present. And whereas Del Norte County Board of Supervisors continue to remember and support the foresighted and futuristic thinkers of the early 1900s to dedicate the property to fund this iconic symbol not only nationally but internationally, now therefore let it be resolved that the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors congratulate the Golden Gate Bridge and Highway District along with their partner, the Golden Gate National Park Conservancy, for a weekend of celebrating the 75th anniversary, passed and adopted this 12th day of June 2012.
But that was a mouthful on the number and the dates. We just go year to year at some point.
Thank you very much, Board. It's appreciated. Maybe I should have been in beforehand, but I didn't, and my excuse was the dog ate my resolution. But anyway, it was a great, excuse me, it was a great celebration. There was no total money spent on the project, as many people probably thought we were, we would, but we did not. We entered into a contract with the Golden Gate National Park Conservancy, which is a wonderful group. They handle Alcatraz, Golden Gate Park, the Headlands, they've got several agencies, and now they are our partner in selling on the memorabilia and all of the things, our pavilion that they just built for us. We expect a long relationship with them, and hopefully, we'll be around another 25 years to see the next one. I may not be, but some of you may. But anyway, thank you very much for the resolution.
Nice to hear it.
All right. Next, we have the second proclamation in recognition of the 200-year anniversary of the War of 1812, the week of June 12 through the 18th, 2012. Supervisor Finnegan?
The proclamation presented by the Del Norte Board of Supervisors in recognition of the 200-year anniversary of War of 1812, the week of June 12 through 18, 2012. Whereas June 18, 2012 marks the 200-year anniversary of the War of 1812 declared by our fourth president, James Madison. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition on this action, which was the first time the United States declared war on a foreign nation in defense of its sovereignty. And whereas during the Battle of Baltimore in 1812, the United States citizen Francis Scott Key was inspired by the love of his nation to write the lyrics of our beloved national anthem, "The Star Spangled Banner." And whereas the War of 1812 is commonly known as the Second War of Independence, establishing the United States as an independent nation that would protect its citizens from being taken off US, United States ships, and forced to serve in servitude to another nation, or any other acts of aggression by a European power to protect its land and citizens. And whereas Americans fought, sacrificed, and died to once again establish and preserve the freedoms guaranteed to us by the Constitution of the United States, and now therefore the County of Del Norte hereby proclaim the week of June 12 through 18, 2012, as 200-year anniversary of the War of 1812 week, and ask the citizens of the County of Del Norte to recognize the significance of the War of 1812, our Second War of Independence, and the men and the women who fought to protect the new government in a time of dire need and help establish the foundation of a great nation.
I'm the Regent for the Del Norte Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. The War of 1812 is one of the most relatively little-known wars in American history. Despite its complicated causes and inconclusive outcome, the conflict helped establish the credibility of a young United States among other nations. It was a popular war among the American public and fostered a strong sense of national pride among the American people. Most Americans today forget that after the revolution, the United States government was still forming. Thomas Jefferson, our third president, had depleted the military and the navy, believing that it was unnecessary expense, leaving the United States at a weakened state when our fourth president, James Madison, took office. Most European countries didn't expect the United States to survive. America's future seemed more uncertain than ever when the British set their sights on Baltimore, Maryland's vital seaport. On September 3, 1814, British warships began firing upon Fort McHenry that protected the harbor of Baltimore, Maryland. The bombardment continued for 25 hours while the nation awaited the news of Baltimore's fate. When Francis Scott Key declared, "Oh, say, does that Star Spangled Banner still wave?" he posed a question for all generations of Americans to answer, and created a universal feeling of patriotism, courage, and resilience. It is no wonder that the War of 1812 was also known as the Second War of Independence. The Daughters of the American Revolution asked that all Americans remember that American history is not just a story, but a definition of who we are. The Del Norte Chapter would like to thank the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors for approving the 200-year anniversary of the War of 1812 proclamation.
Thanks, Katie Gavin. So we're going to go to our timed item at this point, because no other proclamations on the consent agenda. We'll go to public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit... Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and state your name and address for, or state your, your name and residence for the record.
Good morning, my name is Chris McCollum, I'm the Executive Director of the Del Norte Childcare Council, and with me is Doreen Wells, she's the Coordinator of the Local Childcare Planning Council, I am also the Board of Supervisors' appointee to this council. And we want to very briefly just update you on the status of the childcare subsidies and early child development funding that is right now on the, I guess, on the floor of the legislature, and it is connected to the finalizing of the 2012-2013 fiscal year funding. The materials that have been passed out kind of give you some of the background to substantiate what Doreen and I are going to say, but basically since 2008, early child development has been reduced by 25%, and that means preschools, it means childcare subsidies and eligibilities, and just a broad spectrum of reductions. The current proposal is to reduce it by an additional 25%. In addition, the governor's recommendation is to create a tax increase, and if that does not pass on the November ballot, there will be another $6 billion reduction to the Department of Education this fall, and that includes preschools, childcare, and it goes clear to universities. So, it's being chewed on from both ends of the continuum of our children.
He's also asking for realignment to happen with childcare, all childcare except for state preschool will be taken out of the Child Development, California Department of Education Child Development Division, and put into Department of Welfare. So, they're basically looking at it as, as childcare and not even as an education component.
And so, we wanted to real quickly give you the impact to Del Norte County. So, in order to make that reduction, first of all, the family eligibilities for childcare subsidies will be reduced from $42,000 to $37,000 a year, that's for a family of three, and that means that those folks between 37 and 42 are losing their opportunity to get help with their childcare. And so, that means that fewer working families will have assistance. If you think about having, not, not having $7,000 to $9,000 available this upcoming year for assistance in your day-to-day working life, that can make a significant impact.
And then if you can look back at our economic impact report, the LPC did for the childcare industry, looking at his industry, at that time, we had approximately $8 million in 2004 that was brought into Del Norte County through this industry, and it employed about 268 people. And I did a really rough estimate, but...
Doreen, sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
Are you gonna be much longer, because we're, we're on a time, time deal stage.
It's all in here, you can look at that piece.
Okay, if you want to touch on a couple...
Was that three minutes?
Yeah, you're, you're, I love that, if you want to wrap it up, you can go ahead and wrap it. Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll let you close.
So, you can just look in here at all the, the numbers, the county Department Board of Education, Del Norte County Superintendent of Schools just approved a resolution last Thursday, they haven't even signed it yet. We also put in your packet one that another county board of supervisors approved.
And then, and then just real quick, like, we wanted you to know that, that it means that we will not get approximately $241,000 for Del Norte County, it represents about 60 childcare slots.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Are you, did, did they present a proposed resolution that they're asking us to?
Not, not this time.
Are you gonna be bringing...
I wanted you to know what other counties are doing.
Are you gonna bring one forward for us?
Forward, yeah.
I would appreciate that. That would be the way to go. Yeah, thank you. Any other public comments?
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Sullivan and Supervisors, and congratulations on your reelections. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the latest news regarding the Marine Life Protection Act Initiative. I know it was in the paper, but I just wanted to alert you and the public to some of the other resources about our NPAs off our coast. On June 6, the California Fish and Game Commission did approve and adopt our unified array from the Oregon border down to Point Arena, and there are four NPAs and three special closures that directly affect us in Del Norte County. One is up at Pyramid Point, and it comes down just shy of Prince Island, just to the north of Prince Island, and it allows for surf, smelt fishing. We have an offshore MPA at, off of Point St. George that allows for crabbing and salmon trolling and tribal uses. And, and then we have at Reading Rock, we have two NPAs, it's a, doesn't actually capture the rock itself, it's just to the south of it, we have a reserve that's offshore, and then an inshore SMCA that allows for crabbing, salmon trolling. And then our special closures are 300-foot special closures, one is off of Southwest Seal Rock, and that's a no-entry, 300 feet, about 100 yards, and then there's another one at Castle Rock, 300, or 300 feet, and then Falls Clamath Rock down by Wilson Beach. And there are some good resources, if you want to get a good picture of what these NPAs look like and their uses allowed, it's marinemap.org, or you can go to the Fish and Game website and look at all the documentation on the process. I'd like to congratulate you guys for your foresight in getting involved with this process early in 2009, specifically Supervisor McClure, and I think without that, we wouldn't have been able to lead the way for our region to allow us to come together and, and get our voice out there about what we need here in our county, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Zach, I know that your work had a lot to do with getting that thing through, so, thank you for your involvement in that. At this point, we're going to, any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment, and item 31 in the agenda is, we, we didn't hear back from the district, so we don't have anything on this agenda, so, item 31 isn't going to be addressed here, so we'll go to 10:30 timed item, receive a presentation by Kevin Hendrick, Director of Del Norte Solid Waste with regard to the solid waste budget and take action as necessary. Come on up, give.
Here we are again. The budget that I gave you is the same budget that you saw three weeks ago, there were no recommended changes when the full board met, so it's the same budget that's being scheduled for the public hearing two weeks from today. It is a $2.9 million budget, it's about $150,000 less than the previous year, those are just statistics, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, otherwise we'll have time in a couple weeks.
Anybody in the, I, I know you, we already drilled you with questions on, on our general solid waste committee.
You did good, yeah.
So, I think, are there any questions or comments from supervisors? Okay.
All right, so the public hearing will be scheduled 3:45, two weeks from now, I'll be meeting with Jerry and Rich next week to get the agenda together.
And we're, we're gonna open up right now, just do some public comment though on after, I'm sorry to catch you off, so, anyway, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll sit down.
No, is there anything else?
No, I like to be brief.
Brief, okay, thanks, Kevin. Any, any public comment on the solid waste budget? Okay, that's, that's, thanks, Kevin. Okay, so we're gonna go on to our, well, we're early for that, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to accept the budget transfers.
Second.
Okay, were there any particular ones you were taking on the budget?
Well, you're wanting to move this thing along pretty fast there, Sullivan, so why don't you fill in the blanks?
So, is that a motion entertain items 25 through 29 in the agenda?
Which would be budget transfer 0513, 1406, 0102, and 03.
Okay. Any public comment on that? Okay, I've seen no public comment, Chairman, can you please pull the vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, so, at this point, we will go to, we're still early on that, so we'll go general government, item 37, consider and approve, propose border cross regional airport authority budget as provided in Article 4, funding of the VCRAA-GPA agreement as requested by the airport director.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Good news, second, any public comment? Chairman, can you pull, please pull the vote?
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Item 38, considering and approve the proposed special aviation budget for 2012-13 as requested by the airport director.
Move to approve that.
Second.
Second, any public comments? Seeing no public comment, Chairman, could you pull, please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, so we'll go on to item 39, deny the land use appeal for RBS Washington Boulevard LLC as it's inconsistent with county code and the conditions of approval for major subdivision, MJ1202 as requested by the Director of Community Development.
Thank you, this is a request by an applicant, RBS Washington Boulevard, which is a limited liability corporation to waive requirements for improvements along county roads. As you know, our county code has requirements for public road improvements, and in 2011, we granted a subdivision to the applicant that included this particular improvement that they're requesting waiver from. This is the sidewalk along the north side of Summer Park Court. At that time, they had to either make the improvements or bond for the improvements prior to filing the subdivision, and they did bond for those, and we are holding a bond for that improvement, and the appeal period on that requirement ran out, and, and that was the requirement for the first subdivision. This is a re-subdivision for a phased approach to Summer Park Apartments, creating phases one, two, and three. Staff is consistent, and county staff is consistent, and we have requested the requirement for the improvement of the sidewalk along the north side of Summer Park Court, and now we're in an appeal period for that requirement. Now, they've already bonded for those, so what they're asking for is that they want to appeal this so that we would refund that portion of the bond. In the code, it also indicates under what circumstances you'll request an appeal, and those include geographic terrain, hardship, preservation and enjoyment of the applicant's property rights, and public health and safety. Along that regard, staff does not feel that the request meets those requirements. Basically, the applicant is requesting the appeal of the requirement for aesthetics, for rear yard privacy for single-family lots that were created earlier, and indicating that it was not needed consistent with the use permit that was approved. The use permit that they refer to did indeed require this condition, and so because of that, we would hope that the, we're recommending that the board deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the condition that was imposed by the planning commission that would maintain the original conditions, ensure that the county code is met, reduce the need to maintain landscaping that they're requesting for in place of the sidewalk, and make sure that we meet the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. So, we would recommend that you deny the appeal, thank you.
Any, any questions from supervisors? Okay, is somebody from the appellant here?
Chairman Sullivan, board members, my name is Steve O'Clair, I'm with O'Clair Consulting, 301 Natoma Street, Suite 103, Folsom, California. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and to meet with you. First, I'd like to acknowledge that we understand county staff's desires and maintain county policies and to avoid creation of new conditions. Ironically, though, the only way you modify road conditions in that county is you make an appeal to kind of break the rules, so, we're kind of here by default that this was the only mechanism we had available. In addition to that, at the time, this approval occurred last summer, county had committed funds, and we were committed to be underway with the project and record the map and go to construction. We assessed it internally and felt at that time, we didn't have the time to do an appeal to the county, because we had accreditation requirements in order to meet the funding of the lender, so we chose to move forward. The other side too, the conditions that went on this re-subdivision is we do have a right of way within the project which we are abandoning. The reason we're abandoning it is because we don't need it. So, we think this is the appropriate form in place today to look at this condition. The reason for our appeals also is to provide an aesthetic injury to the apartments, you know, the owners expected the single family to be built out at the time the apartments went in, that's not the case. We have a condition here where you now have a, a kind of a leapfrog development that has an impact on the internal development in front of it. We, we do want to restore privacy to the single-family lots, we feel that part of the value of single-family lots is privacy and rear yard use. By putting a sidewalk up against a fence on the backyards and inviting traffic into this area, it's going to diminish the lot value. And, and under that consideration, given these economic times, we, developers need to do everything that they can to maintain value. We feel that once the development restarts, if we have this condition, these lots are going to have an economic impact which will affect their development. And finally, at the end of my presentation, I will address county code section 12.04.110. I, to be honest with you, was not aware of those specific conditions until yesterday, as I was reviewing the staff report, and I've gone and addressed those and provide a handout to you. And in regard to those, the particulars of staff's comments, certificate of occupancy threshold calls for a sidewalk to be placed, we are putting sidewalks on both sides of the access court, so by taking this sidewalk out, we still will maintain access. In regard to the creation of landscaping, we believe that'll create a buffer and privacy back for these private lots, will serve them, as well as provide a nice entry feature to the entrance to the apartments. There is a Hidden Creek Homeowners Association which would maintain this landscaping, so would not oppose, create a burden either to the county or to the apartment complex, and we think that's important. We also believe that this view corridor, when you drive in from Washington Boulevard, you're going to look at this entry as a main entrance into the project, and we believe that landscaping will provide a much better feature to the project rather than a Starkwood fence. We have professional landscapers right now that are maintaining the Hidden Creek project, and their contract would be amended to maintain this landscape corridor. As far as the cost, the initial cost of landscaping might be a little cheaper, but in the long run, the maintenance is going to weigh out, weigh the cost of the initial installation, so, there's no economic value to developers making this change out. It's an aesthetic issue, it's an economic value issue to the single-family lots that we just felt was overlooked in our rush to get this project moving last summer. So, finally, I'd like to address the issues of the county's standard. Well, just one more comment on, on staff's comments about Americans with Disabilities, the sidewalk that's proposed on the south side of the street does meet ADA requirements, so, staff doesn't need to be concerned about that being an issue, because we will provide access to this project. But as far as county code section 12.04.110, as far as the geographical constraints, we have no constraints, but the second part of that's, number one, is that either one or two applies. Says the county road standard would entail substantial hardship to the applicant not born by other applications or landowner similarly situated due to the following conditions. Putting a rear yard, or a rear sidewalk in the rear yards is an abnormal condition, it's not a normal development condition that we normally see. This condition results in loss of privacy on these lots, and as you all know, right now, the economic conditions are such that developers need to do everything they can to maintain lot value. Future sales of these homes will be impacted by this existing condition, further moving these lots to the marketplace and creating sales, which provides a development as well as tax revenue to the county. And the loss of this privacy will put these lots at a disadvantage of other lots in the area, so, we do believe there are constraints and impacts to these lots that other development in the county does not experience. So we do believe there are constraints and impacts to these lots that other development in the county does not experience. Says the item third condition by the county code is that the modification is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights by restoring the backyard conditions of the adjacent single-family lots to the same private, privacy conditions and economic value as the balance of the lots in the adjacent subdivision. Once again, it is an economic impact, and it's a privacy impact, and we are disadvantaged by this condition. The fourth county standard is that the granted modification doesn't alter the circumstances or affect the adversity of the health and safety of persons residing in the area. This will actually restore the economic value to these lots and bring them on par with the rest of lots in this development and other lots in the county. Remove the potential for loitering, defacing of the fences by graffiti, restore the loss of privacy, and maintain the intent of pedestrian access to the Summer Park Apartments. So we hope you'll consider these issues and find that our arguments are compelling, that there's no diminishing to county values, access, or development, and it helps the project. Respectfully ask that you approve our request. Any questions?
Any questions, supervisors?
Yeah, if I could. So we're talking about Summer Park Court, is that right?
Yes.
Because I wish we had more clarification on some of these maps. So you're not wanting to put the sidewalk that is adjacent or on these property, on the backside of these properties that are there now?
Yes, right here, these lots that back up to Summer Park Court.
Right. So where do people walk?
On the sidewalks in the front of the lots.
But where do people walk when they're on the backside?
Oh, there's a sidewalk here on the bottom side of the court that they can go around, right across the street.
You know, we've got this issue out there in Washington Park. I was just noticing that the other day. There's no sidewalks on either side of the streets in some of the areas out in Washington Park, and people have to walk in the streets. So, you know, and whether you're on one side of the street or the other, to have to cross the street so that you can walk down the street, I can't see where that's a benefit to anybody. And to put something out there that has to be maintained in perpetuity unless there's a condition on the property owners themselves that there's a way to make them maintain that area for public passing, I can see why the county wants to have this, and I can't see why you don't.
Well, for two reasons. One, the access to the apartments is right here in the court, so people could either come onto the north side as staff's proposing, or you could just come around the bulb and go down the south side. As far as the condition for maintenance, I believe condition four of code section twelve oh four-one-ten says you can oppose conditions. If you'd like to impose a condition that the HOA accepts that, we would accept that as a condition of approval today.
Any other questions from supervisors?
Well, I just, I understand what Supervisor Hemmingson's saying, that at some point in time, you're going to have a whole bunch of residential traffic that you're going to dump onto one sidewalk on one side of the street. It would seem to me, if you're citing a planning area, the planning should have been caught when the subdivision did it and put that road of Summer Lane Place into where you had residential properties backing up the residential properties rather than having the roadway there. Maybe you want to go back to the person and remove that road if you feel that that's an issue. But as long as that road's there, I think there should be sidewalks on both sides, taking into account the amount of traffic that is going to be in that neighborhood, whether it's walking to Walmart or walking to Ace Hardware or walking to the bus stop because of the apartments that are a condition of that subdivision that you knew about when you bought that subdivision.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's a tough situation. I understand what you're saying, Supervisor. If there's a lot of people coming out of the apartments, then it's made our argument that if people are going along the back of those lots, there's going to be no privacy for those lots, and those lots won't sell. If, on the other hand, there's not a lot of traffic on that sidewalk, it can go to the south side. But I know also, if we never build that sidewalk, people never see it, they'll never miss it.
No, they'll be walking in the road.
No, they'll be walking on, well, I think they'd be walking on the south side of the street.
Well, how many units are you talking about that are going to be using that sidewalk?
I think it's one hundred and fifty-nine.
Yeah. You're going to take pedestrian traffic for one hundred and sixty units and put it onto one singular sidewalk going in both directions? I don't think so.
Yeah, we, well, you know, we're-
I tell you what, and I don't mean to pick on you here, but the solution to your problem, if you really think it's devaluating your properties, is figure out what that economic value is. Go back to the person that owns the property on the other side of Summer Place Court, negotiate with them to move that road, and then come back to us and talk about improvements.
Right. Unfortunately, like I said, because of financial lending commitments and time commitments, that road's built, so I don't think we can move the road now. It's not an option.
Any other questions from supervisors?
You know, I did have a question myself, though, because you did say about future generation of taxes on residents there, and I thought that was off the tax rolls. Am I incorrect?
I'm talking about the single-family lots.
Oh, the single-family lots.
If the single-family doesn't, lots don't develop or it's extended further out. I mean, I'm from Sacramento. We're starting to see some recovery in the housing market. We're starting to see home sales pick up, but everything is razor-thin. Margins are razor-thins, homes are small. Everything's done on a base scale of economies, and given this economy, what we want to do is maintain the opportunity for these single-family lots to come back online.
And I understand, and I'm very sympathetic, and I know in certain areas that there are trails that go through communities that butt up against backyards. So there is pedestrian traffic there, and maybe people like it, maybe people don't. It might have been an oversight when the subdivision was done. That's unfortunate. But as long as there is going to be a massive amount of traffic from one hundred and sixty units going down that street, I can't in good conscience not give them adequate sidewalks.
Yeah. We went out and measured some of the traffic from the other apartment complex behind Walmart. It's about seventy-one units.
Hidden Valley, who are you talking about?
The highest traffic count we got in a day from nine AM to four PM was seventy people. Works out to seven people an hour, which works out to one person every ten minutes. I think-
If you get scheduled to walk in that interview, you'll be okay with it.
Well, I don't, I mean, yeah. My point is, I don't think, I don't think there's much pedestrian traffic as you would expect.
It just, what are the policies of this board in conjunction with safe routes to schools, et cetera, et cetera? Public transportation, getting out and walking your neighborhood? What you're proposing is contrary to that. It's just, it's a tough way to go against policy.
Understand.
Any other questions from supervisors?
No, I agree with Supervisor Sullivan. You know, we set policy and we try to follow it, and this big a project, I do believe that that sidewalk should be, should be put in there.
Okay.
And I'm going to give you a little heads up. It might be more expensive. You can do both, you know. You can put the sidewalk in. You can take your fence instead of putting it on the property line. You can encroach it in three feet, giving up three feet of your backyard, do some nice trees planting there and some landscaping that the property owner would be responsible for, and you can have the best of both worlds.
Appreciate your advice.
All right.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I would make the motion to deny the land use appeal for RBS Washington Boulevard LLC as it is inconsistent with county code and conditions of approval for major subdivision MJ one-two-zero-two.
Second. Moving to second. Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, that's been denied. Okay, we're going to go back to our timed item, which was at ten forty-five, receive a presentation from Will Harling, Executive Director of the Mid-Clamath Watershed regarding the Orleans-Somus Bar Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and take action as necessary, which is item thirty-three in the agenda.
Somus Bar.
Somus Bar, excuse me.
Thank you. I know we're way out in the middle of nowhere, and I first want to apologize that I haven't come to the board sooner. After eleven years, we're finally getting to the point of finalizing our community wildfire protection plan for the communities of Somus Bar, which is in Siskiyou County, and the community of Orleans, which, one of the back areas of our planning area is the headwaters of Bluff Creek, which is, it's national forest, it's on the edge of the Siskiyou Wilderness Area, and there's no private property out there. However, it is in Del Norte County, and we overlooked the fact that we didn't, you know, contact you guys for review and eventual signature of this plan. So now coming to the point of ratifying it, when I went to Siskiyou County, one of the reviewers said, hey, wait a minute, where's Del Norte County's signature? And sure enough, you know, we just hadn't done that because it was such a small piece. But, you know, given that apology, I hope you all have had a chance to review the plan. We followed the California Fire Alliance template. We got incredible amounts of input from state and federal agencies in the community, our local volunteer fire departments, the Cudahoga Tribe, and just a ton of people, CAL FIRE and whatnot. And so I'm here today to basically get, you know, answer any questions and then get a signature on this plan.
Any questions from supervisors?
Who's district? Just kidding.
Yeah.
Those are supervisors.
Way out of Somus Bar was in Del Norte County. Yeah, the area.
Let me tell you, it's a long drive.
Yeah.
Any questions from supervisors?
Is the portion that you're talking about acknowledging that Somus Bar in Orleans is Humboldt County, is it accessible from Del Norte County?
No.
I didn't think so.
No, you have to go up the Go Road and then come, you know, come back on Nickwitz Peak and, you know, enter it that way. There was a wildfire, the Blue Two wildfire in two thousand eight, did burn through that area, and there was some issues between Green Diamond and the Urock Tribe in that area, so.
I appreciate you taking the lead.
There are fire issues.
Yeah.
Any other?
I appreciate you coming out, and I know we talked on the phone, and it is important because a lot of times, Del Norte County at some points is forgotten as the last.
Like this time.
Yeah, like this time, but you did come, so, and a lot of times, we're not asked, so I appreciate you coming out. I think if there's anything else, well, I don't think there'll be anything else unless some supervisors can bring it up now, or staff has. Any comments?
Don't we have a fire safe council? What's his name, Levitt?
Levitt.
Has this been, Dan, has he been presented with this?
Yeah, Dan and Cheryl Levitt, they've reviewed it probably six or seven years ago. It hasn't been recently, but we've actually gotten quite a bit of information from him, from both of them, you know, in the formation of our fire safe council. We have, about every three years, we have a meeting of the Northern California Fire Safe Councils, and that's where I got to meet those guys. And actually, some of their techniques of using goats for maintenance of fuel breaks have been implemented in our area based on their, what they've done over here in Del Norte.
Excellent.
So do we need to approve to sign on at this point, or?
Yes. Technically, the, you know, what you're approving is that this was collaboratively developed with interested parties and federal land management agencies managing land in the vicinity of Orleans, Somus Bar, Wichita, and Forks of Salmon that identifies and prioritizes areas for hazard fuels reduction treatments and recommends the types and methods of treatment that may protect Orleans and Somus Bar, and that it recommends measures to reduce the ignitability of structures throughout the area addressed by the plan. And then it basically says the following entities mutually agree with the contents of this CWPP. I think you could probably make an argument that, you know, I could have been more collaborative in the instance of Del Norte County.
I was going to say that, I recall the collaboration.
So I hope you did get a copy of it to review, and, you know, honestly, you know, just what might be of interest to Del Norte County is the revenue from any sort of timber removal from that area. And what we've tried to do through the Healthy Forest Restoration Act is to bring all parties to the table. We currently have a four thousand acre project, Orleans Community Fuels Reduction and Forest Health Project, that after litigation was resolved, is being implemented right now, which we feel is a balance between the needs of private landowners, the needs of fish and wildlife, and the socioeconomic needs of our community to have some sustainable business. So, you know, to that extent, what we believe is in this plan is a roadmap for us to get away from litigation and to, you know, implement sound projects on the ground.
Is there a time crunch for this?
For signing?
Yeah.
Yes. We are, we received funding from Humboldt County Title III to finalize this CWPP. We are on an extension right now because we were requested by our local volunteer fire department to go back to our community and have a series of neighborhood meetings to make sure that this plan was consistent with their previous input. So we did that. We have a supplemental action plan that's going to be an appendix to this plan that summarizes those recent meetings. So we've gone through that in the past three months, and now we're getting signatures. And we have pretty much all the signatures except for the Happy Camp Fire Protection District, Tom Mopas, he's a hard guy to get a hold of, and CAL FIRE Siskiyou County. Again, it's just a matter of, you know, getting this paper in his hand to sign. He said he will sign it.
Would two weeks work? I mean, what I'm kind of thinking is that possibly that we could ask CDD to take a look at this and make, and run it by Levitts just to make sure that the fire council here and everybody is happy with it. That way, we would not, we could pass the red face test as far as that we took care of some background. So that would be my proposal, is that we get this to community to development and to the fire safe council, and we'll ask them for a comment for-
And what about CAL FIRE Del Norte? Do they need to be involved?
Probably. We can just shoot it to them. I mean, I'm sure they're pretty aware of it.
I'm just, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, the CAL FIRE boundaries follow the county boundaries, so, you know, and part of it is just the alphabet soup of entities we've had to sign off on this. I mean, it's pretty crazy. We're already split between Humboldt and Siskiyou and two national forests.
And I think that you're absolutely correct when you say that it's a roadmap for being able to use the forest, and that's really important, so.
So I guess two weeks would give us a chance to add on the, I guess the Humboldt-Del Norte unit is one unit for CAL FIRE, actually. I just realized that.
It probably is, yeah.
It is, and so we do, we do have a signature from those guys.
That's cool.
So we'd be able to get back to you in, which is, I think, the next meeting date is second, fourth Tuesday in this month, so we'd have an answer for you.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
I have my inked copy signature here. Should I leave that here, and then it could be mailed back to me?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so you don't have to come again.
Good.
All right, Jeremy. All right. Thanks, Will. Any other comments?
Okay, so we're going to push that off till the next meeting to vote on that, and then we'll go to our timed item at eleven o'clock. Receive a presentation from Tamara Layton, Executive Director of the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission for an update on the California Transportation Statewide Needs Assessment. Item thirty-four on the agenda.
Can I bring you some paper?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah.
Transportation Commissioner Mike Sullivan asked me to come here and speak to you today. Chair Sullivan of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Tamara Layton. I'm the Executive Director of the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission, and I'm also the Rural County's Task Force Representative for the statewide needs assessment process. And coming into this process midway, Kathy Matthews was a representative. She retired from her position, and I'm filling in after her, so I was participating in this process through the second half. We've been working at the statewide needs assessment for about three years now. The needs assessment was initiated by urban Southern California areas who went to the CTC and said, let's do a statewide needs assessment and see where we are in transportation. And then they moved forward with attempting to set policy based on urban needs. And the Rural County's Task Force, among other organizations, stepped up and said, no, wait a minute, because policy leads to funding formulas, and even though you funded this process doesn't, you know, put you in the lead position for setting statewide policy. So in December, the California Transportation Commission took a step back and said, we're going to go through a policy setting, some policy setting meetings rather than just accepting the policy established by the urban areas. So we have a series of four meetings. One of them happened a couple of weeks ago. The next one is on Thursday, and then we have two following, one a month for July- next one is on Thursday, and then we have two following, one a month for July and August, and perhaps into the future until we can establish some principles and some policies that we can settle on across the state. The two documents that I gave to you, one is dated June 7, 2012, it's just a sample of the kind of work that CSAC is leading. I'm very appreciative of their work, the California State Association of Counties, I understand they're about to change their name, but the CSAC group has been.
No, RCRC did, not CSAC.
Oh, RCRC did, okay. The CSAC has been a really great leader in this process and coming to the table with policy that can work across the state, so I wanted to bring it to your attention that they've been just really helpful in providing the leadership to the Rural Counties Task Force that we need. We're not statewide policy setters. We do regional transportation policy in our own rural regions across the state of California, but the level of work that they're putting forward, even compared to the level of work that the urban areas are putting forward in attempting to establish policy is just far and above anything that I've seen, so I really appreciate their expertise in policy setting. The second document from the National Rural Assembly talks about some federal policies. Kathy Moxon and Terri Sapahan were regional representatives on this process, did a lot of work on the national level in setting transportation policy. This is the document that came out of the work that they did, another good example of transportation policy that respects urban areas and also rural areas and gives us some additional support for the policy setting moving forward. Some principles that we're talking about right now, we're talking about principles before we talk about policy, or at least we're attempting to talk about principles before we come in and talk about policy, but some of the things that the needs assessment has shown us is that we can't build our way out of congestion through highway expansion alone. It's one of the things that rural California has been saying over and over again, is you can't build your way out of congestion. The minute you build a highway, it's failing again. It's just not going to be the long-term answer. The vast majority of our Prop 1B funds, the $19.4 billion, went to urban areas and for capacity increasing projects, more highway, more highway lanes, you know, more flyovers, more urban solutions for things, but that's also more maintenance. So, we have a transportation infrastructure that we can't maintain now. We have that in our community, we have that on our state highway system in our community, but we also have it on our local streets and roads. So, building more highways isn't a solution for congestion relief and it isn't sustainable over time. So, the policy that we're looking at is a unified statewide revenue solution, equitable distribution, new revenues borne by all users, so that means that finding a way to tax users of systems like transit systems, pedestrian systems, I don't know the answers to these, but these are some of the concepts that they're thinking about, because again, we can't afford the current transportation system, let alone what people are attempting to build. Funding sources that are stable and reliable, flexibility in certain funding sources to obtain adequate funding for needed projects, and then revenue streams for capital projects need to fund urban mobility, rural sustainability. So, we talk about those two things as the balance. You have rural mobility issues, but on the other side, you have rural sustainability issues, and this is where we end up bumping heads in statewide policy for transportation and then the subsequent formulas for transportation funding. So, it's just finding a way to have a balance. One of the things that we hear about a lot in these meetings is return to source. That means that those areas who are generating the tax base get back the money that they put into the tax system. The unfortunate imbalance in that is actually addressed in the National Rural Assembly sheet, but it is really that we are a whole state of California and we have a lot to contribute in Delnart County, and just because we don't have dirty air now doesn't mean that we're not making a contribution to the Clean Air Act. And, I mean, we have a lot of trees, we have clean air now. If we sustain our clean air, then we're making a contribution. So, it's that kind of thinking where sustaining the areas that have clean air is also making a contribution and all of the money that is ever collected by tax base that's dedicated to clean air doesn't have to go to urban areas, that rural areas should have access to that funding to, for sustainability. And so, it's that kind of thing that we're working on. CSAC has been spectacular. I appreciate their contributions and Mr. Sullivan asked to come give you an update and I'll answer any questions if.
Is that DM Baker you're working with?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll let her know.
Yeah, and Kiana.
Yeah, they meant we had a call on this yesterday. Good.
Any questions from supervisors?
I think one of the, when Tamara and I talked, one of the issues that we're really concerned about is this return to source funding situation, which means we're going to not end up very good in that circumstance. So, I think we are going to be the state's nature park. The state needs to help fund some transportation issues up here, so, since it's their park. Any other comments?
I made some extra copies, not knowing how many people would be in the room and there on the.
I'm just glad to see that one of the identified stories of how transportation is working in rural America actually kind of replicates dialerite here. So, that to me is one of the important things of people being able to call for special senior and disabled riders. So, I was glad to see it here because later on in the week, that's one of the things that's kind of being picked on, so.
Right, one of the things that talks about in detail in there, if I may, is that the paratransit services are far more expensive than the transit services and often they're parallel systems because that's what's required by law, and so you have paratransit following in the same path or in the same footprint as transit. And if we can make transit more accessible, fewer people will need the more expensive paratransit and will be able to ride the regular transit system. That isn't going to work for everybody, but it could work for some people. So, some of those solutions are about accessibility and making bus stops more accessible, more comfortable, you know, bus shelters, those kinds of things, and moving our transit-dependent population from the more expensive, more exclusive transit services, who are still going to be needed by some, but perhaps not by all the people who are using them. So, I think, you know, there's some good ideas in here that can help every community.
All right, thanks, Tamara.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to item 35, which was an 1115 timed item, hold a public hearing for a rezone, a general plan amendment for APN 106-220-01. Lefazo has requested a planner too. Randy?
Okay, the item before you is the consideration of a general plan amendment and a rezone. This is on a two and a half acre parcel off of Kings Valley Road. The parcel is presently designated as general agriculture under the county general plan and forest recreation under the Title 20 zoning code. The applicant essentially requests to amend the general plan to rural mobile home park and to rezone the parcel to mobile home park, so two different designations there, although consistent with each other. The purpose of the project is to facilitate the development of what is now the vacant parcel with a small four-unit park. The proposed land use categories presently exist on the parcel immediately to the south of the project parcel, so in effect, the approval of this application would result in the extension of those existing land use and zoning districts, which would avoid any potential problems with spot zoning restrictions. The development of the park would require municipal water and onsite sewage disposal. A will serve letter has been provided from the city and an engineered septic system is being designed by Lee Tromble. The analysis of the project by staff did not identify any significant issues. We conducted a sequel review, which resulted in a negative declaration, which was posted. The comments we got back on that were fairly routine in nature, so at this point, staff would essentially recommend that the project be approved through the adoption of the proposed ordinance, resolution, and the associated maps as presented in your agenda. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from supervisors?
All right.
Anyone else, public comment, want to speak to this issue? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. And entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve and adopt an ordinance replacing the non-coastal zoning map P7 in the resolution amending the general plan use, land use designation for APN 106-220-01.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, so at this point, since we're short of our time, we're going to take a four-minute break for our stream at this point. Meetings back in session. We'll take item 36, which is a timed item for 11:30. We're still short on that, too. Let's go to item 40, consider miscellaneous legislative budget matters pertinent to the county of Delnart. Okay, we'll take it. Yeah, good timing. David, do you want to throw anything, since you're usually on the legislative side?
No, the rumor has it the Democrats are probably going to develop a budget proposal by Friday and everything is in flux. Got RCRC tomorrow and I'm sure we'll get updates on most of the stuff, so.
Okay.
Too early to tell.
Doesn't look good.
No, it doesn't look good.
All right, we'll wait for a CAO.
Europe?
The significant issues that are out there, as we spoke a little bit about earlier, is the state budget and obviously, we're following to see what potential impacts may come from any decision. I know that the, there was a proposal put forward by the Assembly yesterday. It's another version, it doesn't necessarily agree with what the governor's proposed budget was, and so there'll be negotiations. It's going to committee, I believe, today and we'll see what the outcomes are. There's a considerable amount of funding that they disagree on and I'm not sure how they will plan on coming up with revenue to pay for it because they were, some of it was the childcare issue and there were a few others that they disagreed on that generally would not cut the programs as much as the governor's proposal, and so we're following that. Again, the IHSS issue, and Gary can speak to this also, but we had an emergency CAO conference call on Friday and the biggest issue will be that what they find as the base year for the maintenance of effort. It looks like it's going to happen. Most of the plan would be of little impact to the county if they get the, if they get the plan forward that they've produced, it would restrict any additional costs associated with collective bargaining that the state would then enter into in the future, but leave us with the maintenance of effort. There was not an escalator clause either based on CPI, which is a good deal for us, but essentially, it looks like IHSS has decided that it's easier for them to negotiate with the state than it is with the locals. And to be honest with you, you know, it's a good program, but the way it's set up, all we do is collective bargain. There's work to be done through Gary's office, some of his staff members are one in particular, but the incentive to collective bargaining is, bargain is really through the state. It's a state program that they've imposed on the counties in the past. So, we're following that. They did expect that there would be something coming out after the weekend and we haven't seen it at this point. As far as the county budget process, we are continuing to go through the plans that were submitted by the departments and/or creating plans for departments, depending on what the bottom line is. The auditor controller should have this year's books closed sometime by the end of July and we'll know by the middle of August what, you know, where we're at, either a positive or negative for our fund balance. We're working off of some projections at this point and looking at some of the more significant issues. Obviously, the jail and sheriff's office are the largest with about a $1.3 million deficit, which is going to require some cuts if it continues the way it's going. The probation department came in with a fairly large deficit. It looks like AB 109 funding will assist with that one to offset general fund costs, although not sufficient to really do the job that is proposed through realignment, it does assist through probation. The Community Development Department still has a fairly significant deficit and there were some revenues that were anticipated now through some projects actually at the airport, which is a benefit. If they're running them through locally, there, you know, some of that money that will be spent, will be spent through the county through engineering. So, we continue to work on those. It looks like the recommended budget will come forward. Any significant changes should come sometime probably in August to early September if required. So, we are working continually on that one as we get information. The plans are generally in place and we just need to know what we're working with so we can ask the board or propose to the board what we've been given. Legislatively, there's a number of trailer bills out there we've been following. Some of those our advocates have actually weighed in on based on our ledge platform and that continues to be something that's a benefit because they can jump on those fairly quickly. Anything significant will be presented to the board for a resolution or for some type of a policy decision and we will continue to monitor any of those trailer bills. RCRC just sent out a notice, it has probably 20, 25 bills on it, and they've shown what their recommendation is as far as oppose, neutral, or support, and most of those I think are in line with our ledge platform.
Okay. Okay, so, anything else, Chair?
I think that's it.
Okay. It's amazing that they can't get a budget done, but they can pass 20 more bills or...
Well, you know, what's speculated is that the state will have a budget passed by the 15th because of the legislation that says that the legislators don't get paid. Last year, they passed it and then the governor had vetoed it. They're not saying that this year, that they might have an actual deal in place by then, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of posturing out there as to which direction it'll go and the Assembly and Senate are not necessarily agreeing as to what these cuts should be on their end of it. So, there is a plan out there, but it's going to have to be negotiated and as everybody knows, there's got to be cooperation on both sides.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Okay, at this point, we're going to go to our timed item, item 36 on the agenda, which is receive a presentation regarding Committee on Sutter Coast Hospital Regionalization and take action as necessary. Hey, Dwayne?
And we are requesting that the board put someone on our committee that we're putting together to monitor the situation with Sutter in order to build a coalition that indicates to Sutter that we're very serious about having some local control over our community hospital here. We had promises years ago from Sutter when they first came here that they were going to take care of the community and this is no time for them with their new administration to be taking the money and running. So, I won't get into a lot of detail as far as what's been happening with the doctors and I think most of you guys have been brought up to date with some of the things that's going on, but I would add that from the healthcare district standpoint, over the years, we have pumped a lot of money and resources into this community to help Sutter be profitable and I think that's one of the things that we need to make sure Sutter is aware of. The Wellness Center comes to mind, the nursing programs we've tried to put together to generate some employment in this community. So, I think Mrs. Duncan has a letter that she wants to read when the opportunity applies, but that's basically it. We'd like you to appoint someone to our committee and then we will, once I get the appointee from the city, then we will go ahead and set up a meeting hopefully for the first part of next week.
Okay. Thanks, Dwayne. Questions from supervisors or?
I just want to comment that it's frightening to see the detail of what Sutter's doing and it didn't cross, it finally crossed my mind when they had talked about the train that's already left the station, that I realized that they're doing two rails to us at one time. One is the regionalization and then making us an acute, what's the name of the?
Acute care?
Essential.
Critical.
Critical access hospital. Well, in a critical access hospital, we'll allow you to stay there for four days and if you have ever had your granny or somebody in the hospital and they've been, a need to be in there for eight days and you're there every day because you're taking care of her, you're not going to get that opportunity because she's going to be flown out and the people in this community cannot afford to have to travel to sit by someone that they love in order to make sure that they're receiving the care that they need. And Sutter, we need to push back. Lake County is in a horrible shape because... Lake County is in a horrible shape, shape because of this regionalization and what they did to Lake County. So I am, I would love to be on that committee because I'm, I've been reading everything I can get my hands on and talking with the docs and so I would love to be considered.
Yeah, it's very serious.
Yeah.
And Delmar County really is, is too remote to be controlled by a group of folks in the Bay Area.
Well, right. This 25-bed hospital is designed for the type of hospitals that are in, you know, somewhere in North Dakota that are four or 500 miles away from everything.
Right.
And that they get a higher funding level. But that's all Sutter's looking at, is that they wanna collect on that higher funding level.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, supervisor?
You know, I'm glad that you, this is on the agenda and before I saw that it was on the agenda, I was gonna talk to us about having a joint meeting with the healthcare district. Cause I'm not so sure that, I don't know what the end of that committee is. I don't know what, what, what relationships or what contractual relationships the healthcare district had with Sutter, whether it was leased ground, whether it was, you know, whatever the deal was there. I think you touched on, Martha did too, there's two issues here. One is the regionalization, which is never good. The other is the old switcheroo on what our hospital's gonna look like out here. And maybe, maybe we don't want representation if we're outvoted anyway. Maybe we wanna get rid of Sutter. And we'll look at some other options, whether it's the doctor-owned hospital or whether it is the Asante Group or...
Well, we, you know, in 1986, when we cut this deal with Sutter, there was, Rogue Valley was involved in the negotiations also and Sutter came in and made a lot of promises. I mean, it was, they said, if you build a prison, why we're your partner. And, you know, of course, that's been 25 years ago. A lot of things have changed in 25 years and, you know, business is business. But, you know, back then, there was language in the agreement that stated it would be pretty much run by a local group. I, I'm frankly surprised that, that they have gotten their local group to all agree to, you know, to go along with this thing. You know, if it hadn't have been for Dr. Caldwell originally here, taking a long, hard look at this thing and saying, hey, wait a minute here, what's going on? I mean, we'd have probably had this shoved down our throat. They'd never said anything to the healthcare district. I was off the board for about a year and, and, but there was nobody that came in, in the 24 years that I was on the board, had ever said that they were looking at doing any of this kind of stuff.
So I appreciate you gonna form a committee. I'm just begging the question if that's strong enough because as far as the board of supervisors is concerned, healthcare is one of the largest economic driver and appeals to a community.
Certainly.
And so goes that, so goes the community, so goes our tax base, et cetera, et cetera.
But we'll have Herman, Spatsler, Gary, I mean, we're gonna have, you know, all our guys that are heavily connected in the healthcare in Delmar County. And I think if we can get this group together, all sit down, why, at least we're gonna indicate to Sutter that it's, this is a serious issue for us. We won't go down without a fight.
And you know, the, the 25-bed hospital is frightening enough, but then when you realize that there's contractual agreements with State of California, the prison, there's contractual agreements on how many beds are reserved for OB, there's, and you end up dwindling down to about between a 15, 17-bed hospital.
Yeah. Well, Sutter has made money at Sutter Coast every year that they've been here.
Oh, yeah. They make boatloads of money.
And even though it's a public entity, it's still very difficult to try to track a lot of the, how the money's been handled around. But this is not like this is a community hospital that is sitting here in the red. They've made money in a lot of it and a lot of it, in my opinion, has to do with the fact that, that the healthcare district and a lot of other people in this community have helped Sutter through the years to be profitable and they need to be made aware of that. So, thank you.
Public comment? Mrs. Duncan?
Hi, I'm Anne Marie Duncan and I have a letter from my husband Greg Duncan, who's the chief of staff at Sutter Coast and he can't be here right now because he's over at the operating room this morning. I can read you his letter. I have copies to distribute afterward also.
Okay.
He says, "Dear Supervisors, I'm writing with an update on Sutter Health's plans to dissolve our local board of directors and merge the hospital with the Sutter West Bay region, a process known as regionalization. On May 16th, the medical staff of Sutter Coast Hospital passed a unanimous resolution asking the hospital board to rescind its prior vote to regionalize. I offered this resolution to the board on June 7th. In support of the motion to rescind the prior vote, I read statements from the California Medical Association, which questioned the legality of the Sutter West Bay regional bylaws. I also offered arguments opposing regionalization from letters written to the board by Dr. Larry Eninger," and I've enclosed these letters in your packets. "My motion to rescind the prior regionalization vote was defeated. I was advised that the roll call results of that vote and the meeting minutes are confidential. Seven months following the vote to regionalize, Sutter Health still has no plans for any public meetings to discuss the community impact. Due to the loss of local hospital control, current and future job losses, and possible implementation of critical access designation, I would like to request the assistance of the board of supervisors to oppose Sutter Health's plans to regionalize our community hospital. I have included several documents as reference information. Sincerely, Greg Duncan, Chief of Staff." So I have copies of all of...
Okay, if you wanna hand it to Jeremy. Thank you. Any other public comment on this issue?
We do have a already set up two-by-two system with the healthcare district that we could just rely on the members of the, on the two-by-two.
Yeah, that would be, if we just have, we'll appoint those, those two to serve on the committee.
And we can get it rolling.
Yeah. Clark?
That's an excellent idea. I'd forgotten about that. We hadn't met for a while on the two-by-two, but also I think it's real important that Gary be allowed to spend a little bit of time with this, too. Cause he does bring that direct county involvement into the process. But I think we're a little bit far from, we, we don't have all the facts that we need at this point.
But do you have an attorney yet?
We do have an attorney, indeed. I...
A raft of attorneys.
There's plenty of them, but Sutter also has lots of attorneys. But I, I very much support the idea of this merge and getting somebody from the city to also join us. I think we can do something with this, so thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, supervisor McNamara and McClure are the two appointees on the healthcare two-by-two, so we'll just go with the direction that they, they meet with the committee and obviously Director Blacknick as well. I, I would like to take it a step further, though, is I do think we need to draft a letter from the board of supervisors to Sutter, to Mother Sutter, basically asking for the same thing, as well as a, a letter to our local board, asking them to rescind the, the motion to regionalize.
I agree.
And then I will also see if we can CC our state representatives as well because...
And remind Sutter that when they left here the last time, they agreed to a public forum.
And so I think we're probably gonna have three or four things in that letter that are highlights, but I think we have to let Senator Lamoff, Senate member Chesbro, Governor Brown, why not?
Well, yeah, every one of them and, and as well as the director of finance, or I guess Brown can get it to whoever he needs to get it to, but it, it needs to say that we oppose the regionalization, but it also, we need to say that we do not approve of the transformation that's taking place at that hospital, that it's, that it is a lower level of service and is not to be accepted.
Mm-hmm.
And if they have no intention of serving the community, maybe they ought to, well, maybe you don't tell them in a letter, but maybe ought to get the hell out completely.
I think they're using the critical care card to get us to allow the regionalization. I think that's what it's game that's being played right now, it sounds like.
And offering maybe one space on a 32-member board.
It's very important for us to get this committee put together and so the...
Hey, Dwayne, you might come up, cause they can't hear you on that, on the recording.
It just seems like it's a double negative, Dwayne.
Oh, it is.
Yeah. I think it's just, it's very important that we get this committee put together so that, so that we know exactly what we're gonna be doing and what we're faced with. Dr. Duncan has done a wonderful job of, I don't know how he gets his regular job done with, with the effort he's put into this thing, but, because it is very serious and once we have this committee together, then we can really formulate a good game plan to go after these guys and, and see that something happens in a positive fashion for the community.
So I, I do think on the letter, we need to have as strong a language as possible so that not we're just opposed to it, that we are adamantly, strongly opposed to the regionalization and loss of any kind of local control on the issue, especially based on the information of Sutter as a, as a profitable hospital. Doesn't make sense.
I have a comment.
Yeah, supervisor McNamara.
Sorry. I, I don't know where it plays in, but the doctors that are in the building behind the hospital, that are hired by Sutter Coast, what's gonna happen with them, whether they fall under? Alls I know is when they, one particular doctor that I know of told me he was hired for, for two years, he had a two-year contract, and now it's one, it's only one year after that. These people aren't gonna buy a home here. They, they have no security whatsoever of staying employed by Sutter. I, I was really surprised when my doctor told me that. I said, "You, you're only guaranteed to be here one year at a time? That's pretty sad."
Okay. Come on up, Clark, and then unless there's any other public comment, we're gonna, we'll...
I can partially, hopefully accurately answer that. Sutter cannot, hospitals in California cannot hire physicians directly. So what has occurred is there is a foundation that is separate from the mothership that hires physicians and then contracts them to the different hospitals around. That's how that situation, that is not something of Sutter's making, that is a state law. But I can tell you physician recruitment for Delmar County has been very difficult.
Right.
Very arduous and it's very difficult to produce results, so we need to keep, that's why I like this committee, let's get all these facts out there and then we can really have a good, strong, I think, game plan for our community, so...
What's the, the bylaw changes?
The bylaw changes that are being proposed will allow Sutter to authorize the doctor to be able to be in the hospital, which it's real important for docs to be able to, as the staff, do the accreditation of the doctors.
Exactly. Credential, those kind of, what is a good standard of care in our community?
And Sutter will take all the credentialing.
Exactly.
Which is scary.
So maybe instead of the direction staff, maybe we need to entertain a motion.
I will move that we send a robust letter to Mother Sutter and to the Sutter Board and to our assembly and, and Senate representatives, identifying that they had promised us to have a public forum. They have been silent and not only have they been silent, but we are requesting that they rescind the action of regionalization.
Second.
It's been moved in second?
That's long the motion.
Yeah. Any, any public, any more public comment outside of who's spoken already? So we're gonna bring it back to...
I was gonna ask you about in that letter, though, are you gonna address the fact of the redesignation of the hospital to a lower level of service?
Yes, we can. We want none of the above.
Letter.
Just one quick comment. I, I read an email last night that San Leandro is having some issues and their healthcare district board got into a match with Sutter and there's a $300, or pardon me, a $300 million liability at stake. So I think from a legal standpoint, we need to be careful how we walk down that path and we need to go into this thing trying to negotiate some kind of a settlement before we end up getting ourselves in some type of a legal issue that we...
We're there.
We may regret. I, I hope we aren't, but we need to at least go down the path of negotiation first.
Okay. Thanks, Dwayne. Any other comments from supervisors? Okay, Jeremy, could you pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, passed unanimously. Okay. Do we have any other closing deals, Jay?
I wanna hear a couple of numbers I got this morning.
Okay.
It's interesting, very quickly. Since 2008, local government nationwide has cut 528,000 jobs. The states have cut 134,000. Thought it was kinda interesting.
All right. Thanks for the quote of the day. All right, we're gonna adjourn the meeting until the next regular scheduled one.